Well, it's called a meeting in order for a meeting of the panel select board. It's a regular meeting for Thursday, October 10th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. On the agenda tonight are Agenda Approval, Approval of Minutes from 9:26, Reading and Approval of Warrants, Reading of the Mail, Public Comment, Town Administrator's Report, Consisting of Information on Payroll Systems, Discussion of Budget Process, Balanced Budget Policy, Trash Removal Program Assistance, Process for Reporting Claims of Harassment, Sexual Harassment, Ethics Policy, Website Policy, Review of Fillable Forms, Endorsement of Housing Bylaw Survey, Hiking Trail Dedication, Energy Fair, then moving on to Old Business of Approval of Loan in Advance of Clean Water Revolving Loan. Joel will give us an update on the School Bus Auction, and an update on the Status of the Pilot Bus Program, and then on to New Business for the Diesel Fuel Bid, and then Executive Session if necessary for Personnel. So, you have to wait? So, I'll hear a motion to approve the Agenda.
So moved.
All right.
I'll second.
We have a motion a second to approve the Agenda. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
I do. I want to move up the Bus Auction Update and Status of the Pilot Bus Program. I wish to move that up if we can to...
After warrants.
Public Comments.
Uh, yeah. We'll do it in Public Comments. We'll let Michael do the Mail, then we'll do Public Comments with the bus because most people are here for the buses, so.
Okay. I'd like to also add something, and we could add it after the update from the bus, and that's clarification of the contract we entered into with the consultant Graham and Graham.
Okay. You want to add that word?
Um, after we have the discussion with the bus. Because I think seeing we have such a large audience, it would be really good for the large audience to hear that.
Can you repeat that because this machine here makes noise?
We're adding an item to clarify the contract we entered into with a consultant Graham and Graham.
Okay.
And then also add, under Town Administrator's Report, to authorize Michael to send his letter to the District, the District School Board? Is that who it was?
It was the Business Manager.
Business Manager.
SBSU.
We can discuss that at the end of his Administrator Report.
Yep. And that's it. That's all I have.
Okay. Harry, you got anything?
Nope. I think we've got plenty.
Okay. All right. So, would you like to amend your motion?
We'll amend the motion to include the changes that were just made.
So moved.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the Agenda with Changes. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Harry?
Waiting on you. There, thank you. All right. So, Approval of the Minutes for 9:26. I make a motion to approve the Minutes from 9:26.
I will second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the Minutes from 9:26. All in favor, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Onto the warrants. Okay. So, for payroll ending in 9:27 in the amount of $8,626.12, payroll ending 10:26 in the amount of $9,598.97, accounts payable 14 on 10/4 in the amount of $13,433.70, accounts payable 15 on 10/11 in the amount of $31,995.67, and accounts payable 15A on 10/12 in the amount of $3,794.12. And we'll make a motion to approve the warrant.
So moved.
Motion and a second to approve the warrants.
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Mike, care to read the Mail real quick?
Sure. Mr. Charman, we have an easement, legal easement to sign. This is for Green Mountain Power to access the solar panel on Landfill East, and it needs to be signed by the majority of the Board.
I guess we're the majority. But I guess we're the majority.
Yeah, I guess we do.
All right.
No, I don't believe so.
One more?
One more.
Brian, you're going to need some witnesses.
Do we have a volunteer from a witness in the audience?
Val, would you like to volunteer seeing you're sitting so close?
Do we have one?
No, I'm not volunteering, but you're supposed to have a motion to sign that.
Oh, thank you for reminding me.
Thanks for letting us know, Linda.
So, I'll make a motion. Will you approve it?
I will second.
We have a motion and a second to approve it. All in favor say aye. For any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Yeah, no, I do have a discussion. I'm going to ask our Administrative Secretary one more time that if we do something wrong, could you please let us know?
Excuse me, it was an oversight. I'm very sorry.
Thank you.
It was an oversight on all of our parts.
Yes.
We're all moving a little bit, trying to...
Yeah, because I'm trying to get to where we can address everybody so we don't keep everybody here late.
If you made the motion, I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
We have the Bennington County Sheriff's Office report from September 1st to 31st, 2019. There was one 911 hangup, four agency assists, three public assists, two burglaries, one suspicious event, one accident property damage, three agency assists for the Fire and Rescue Department, two motor vehicle complaints, six VIN verifications, three directed patrols, and 39 traffic stops. There has been zero juvenile problems. That is the report.
You pass that to me.
We have a note from the Pownell Highway Department.
Thank you.
North Pownell Road will be closed Tuesday, October 15th, 2019, from Prairie Hill Road to Mount Anthony Road, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 AM for tree removal at the Gardner Cemetery. If you have any questions, you can call 802-442-2056. Want to remind everybody that on Tuesday, October 15th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, at the Pownell School Gym, there'll be an informational meeting for the Town Hall Project. There will also be another informational session, October 17th. And they both say Tuesday, but 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM in the school gym.
Tuesday and Thursday.
Yes. We have a great opportunity. We have a model home, a modular zero-energy home that's parked at the Center Fire Station right behind Town Hall, and the 16th, next Wednesday evening, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, we'll be having a Housing and Energy Fair. We're going to bring opportunities in for people to speak to folks in the energy business, the Shires, regarding getting new housing for low interest. And they're also going to have open house at the trailer, this model home, Saturday the 12th and Sunday the 13th from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. They'll also be open Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, 2:00 to 6:00 PM. Stop on by, and if you miss that, you can go to Bennington, the Ventress Park, on October 18th to the 24th. It's a great opportunity for everybody.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Where is the, where is the, is the sample home going to be?
It's Center Fire Station, right behind us.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you.
Yep. And I believe I got it all, sir.
Okay. So, moving on to, we'll do old business that we'll do, we'll do the update, and then we'll do the public comment because I, that's where everybody's going to be commenting anyway. All right. So Joel, would you care to give us an update?
We sold the 2010. We got a, we put a reserve of 8,000. We ended up with 5,500, and I took it. So, the people are going to come tomorrow and pick it up.
Okay.
So, that one's a done deal. We have two left. I wanted to see how it went, and, you know, it went pretty good, I guess.
So you'll take all the pictures, get the next one listed?
Yes.
Which two are left, Joel? Which?
We have a 2007 and a 2005.
Okay.
Okay.
I think I'll do them both at the same time, just...
Okay. So...
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
I was just curious on what the Board's decision is for the funding, the funds that will, on what will happen to the funds that came from the sale of that bus.
They'll be on a line item within the Highway Department. That's where the bus is already set up. The bus funding is already...
Okay, so it'll go against taxes?
Right.
All right. Thank you.
It goes against the $13,450, correct?
Well, yeah, it's offset the cost.
It offsets that.
I'm sorry.
It offsets the $13,450 the voters voted for in March.
What was that?
It was Article 28 of the ballot. Shall the voters authorize the Select Board to acquire and maintain and operate two used school buses donated by the school district for a cost of $13,450 in the road fund?
Okay.
So the sale of the buses will go into the road fund to offset that $13,000 and change.
I'm sorry. Could you read, just read that one more time, the 13th, what?
So now subtract 5,000 from that.
Here's a copy, Jim.
Jim, that was what you gave away.
I know. I'm just, I'm sorry. I'm just curious. I guess I'm confused on what the $13,000 was.
That, that was put in there to, for expenses as far as upkeep and...
Maintenance, insurance on the bus.
That's what I wanted to hear. What I'll do is, I'll defer my question further once we get into the discussion of the buses.
Okay. All right. So, seeing as you were the first one to contact us about the update from the school, would you kindly repeat it for everybody?
Well, I understand that the school isn't going to pay the driver. So, I guess, the question is, are we going to pay the driver via an employee?
Correct. Please hold your...
Ted?
So, please state your name.
Todd Phillips, Principal, Pownell School. Want to say something first?
No, you go.
Okay. Okay. As far as paying the driver, we do have funds that were allocated in our budget for Pownell School District to pay a driver. And I can't speak for the SBSU as far as paying a driver and how they cannot pay a driver because the driver is driving a Pownell-owned bus, a Pownell Town Bus.
Right.
So I think that's where the confusion is.
All right.
So if the town would hire the driver and bill the school district...
You have money allocated.
Then we have money allocated, and we can just reimburse the town.
That makes perfect sense.
But I guess the question is, what if you don't have enough money allocated for the full cost?
And, and I can assure you, we do. And basically, we had everything in the school budget, as is like every other year for field trips. So I don't see any difference from paying a driver that we would have paid her and the town employing that, that driver, and we would then reimburse. So that is my understanding why the district cannot pay the driver. She, we've had three field trips, and this last payroll, we submitted that to the SBSU District Office for payment for the, for the one driver for those three field trips. And I think that's where the confusion came from.
Okay. Because, wait, I just want to, I just want to ask a question because I'm looking at the budget, the school budget, and it says for 2019. Now granted, I have to look at it on a little itty-bitty screen. It's got drivers and bus aides listed. There's nothing for bus aides, but there's only $5,000 associated in the line item for salary for drivers. And we were told that the cost, the expense for the driver for the year, and I don't know if it was for the year for driving kids back and forth like day to day to school or just for field trips, was $35,000 was the estimate we were given, which is way over that $5,000 line item. So that's why I'm saying it was either really bad information or we need clarification.
Jim tied his hand up for a minute. We pay the bus driver by the hour, and there's a specific rate that we've paid over the last few years. We didn't change that rate at all.
Okay. Jim has a question.
Okay. Going back to my other question and relating this to the whole thing. First of all, my opinion in this whole thing is that come July 1st, and I think it was two days before, the town took over the buses, all right? What had happened before on any discussions with budgets and things like that is past. At that point, the town took over the buses, against my judgment, but they did, it did happen that the town took them over. After thinking about it, I said, well, that I think will work out great. I think it's best that the town took them over for the reasons that they had stated for that. So at that point, in my opinion, the town has now got responsibility of those buses, and I would hate to have any bus driver from outside the town driving a vehicle that is owned by the town. The town is insuring it. If there's any liabilities, it's going to be the town. So you want to be under the responsibility of the bus driver also. So it's my opinion that the bus driver should be under the town employee. Since you guys took the decision, maybe not have thought of everything that's going to be involved with the whole thing, but now is the point to say, yes, because we own the buses, we're going to offer it out for use, we have to be responsible for that driver. Now it comes to the point of, when the budget was created, I did email Mike and say, you know, if you do put an expense in there for all the, all the items, you have to have an offset of a revenue. The revenue was not there. So that means the townspeople of Pownell got taxed for the buses that we own, okay?
For two.
For two. Actually, for five.
Well, that was, yes, but we only voted on two.
Doesn't matter. You guys accepted five. That's what happened July 1st. You have to make, whether you made the mistake or whether you did what you did, you did it, okay? So at that point, if there was a revenue amount in there, that revenue would offset the expense. The townspeople would not absorb any expense. Their taxes went up a little bit, very little bit, but they went up because of you guys taking a bus and not putting it in revenue, all right? So now it comes to the point of, what's going to happen? We have an expense. We have people that want to use the bus. We need to charge the people that are using the bus. Now, the way you come up with using the, coming up with the expense, labor, Joel, insurance, workman's comp, pay of a driver...
Fuel.
Parking, fuel, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, everything. Your time can even put into there because you've dealt with this so much, and you're going to come up with a rate, okay? So now we're going to receive in revenue to offset that expense.
Correct.
It's not going to be, well, first of all, that revenue is not going to come in for future down the road, but we're now catching up with something that may not have happened properly. We will correct it next year. We will put a revenue and expense. They'll match. If they don't match, you guys are not, you guys are offering, have owned buses that are not making a profit. We don't want a profit. You guys are offering a bus that's going to make a loss. We don't want a loss. That's what budgets are for. So the bottom line is, I'm suggesting you take on the driver, put her on the payroll because you made the decision that it happened, that we own the buses. If you don't want that to happen, then you turn to the school and say, we don't want the responsibility. We're going to sell all the buses. Now, the school is involved, the daycare is involved, and anyone else that might want to rent the bus from the town of Pownell. Your insurance company is going to make that decision of what they charge you for insurance. But I think you need to put the driver on the town roll if this is what you want to happen. Thank you.
I need...
Okay. Thank you.
Mike Charman here.
Michael has to start first.
Michael had his hand up first.
What I wanted to say, and Jim touched on it, is it's not a matter of you having money or we having money. They have to be employed by somebody. So, Jim touched on that. If they're employee of ours, then they'll be getting their drug screening, and they'll be under workman's comp, FICA's got to come out of that, and they'll be a town employee. Or they'd be a contractor, and they would bring their own liability, working under...
Would it be W-9?
They would, nobody would do that. It's too high, too high, nobody would do that. So there's really the only two options, and the one is kind of selling, so, you know, that's what you're looking at. If you choose to go down that path.
I know. Nelson?
My understanding is after July 1st, these buses were used by people in the town. You had a driver that was there, and you got reimbursed. So you've already done this in praxis.
Yeah, we did it for the summer rec program.
So, so the program is already in place. The bottom line that I see is, almost like you're trying to reinvent the wheel, the driver and everything, when you really don't need to. You have a driver, they're qualified, from what I understand, they're already on your comp. They're, they're already covered. So all you have to do is make up the decision, what, like, Jim, you were right on the money, what's it cost you for insurance and this and this, and then come up with a rate, and you're going to have a contract that says, we lease the bus out for this per hour, and make sure you're having that contract, the maintenance and the rest, and your costs, and you might even want to have a little more than that because there's unknowns.
Well, we had already set a rate based on the driver working for the school district, which is what our assumption was to begin with.
That's what we were told all along.
Yeah. That's what we were acting on. We had Mr. Walker reaching out to the school district, to the superintendent, who went without response for over three weeks from the school district.
What was the question that you asked the superintendent?
We were trying to get them to sign the contract and, like, are you going to hire the driver or not? That's what we were waiting on.
Because we had come up with a, we had come up with a fee based on the previous Board that negotiated and said they'd take the two buses. It was all under the pretense that the school district kept the bus driver employed. So the town was never going to have a position, let me finish, Nelson, of a, of a bus driver. We just learned that the town needed to employ the bus driver two weeks ago.
Here's, here's why I think the superintendent, based on the fact he already approved a number of field trips, thought you had a driver, and he...
Yeah, there was, there was definite miscommunication, but it wasn't from our end. We were getting no response. We had the emails that Mr. Walker sent.
They sent him a contract to sign, the superintendent? Is that what you did?
No.
What the heck did you ask them?
We, we asked the, the Business Manager and the Superintendent to sit down and discuss it and come up with a contract.
Okay. You need to come up with the contract. You need to decide what you're going to charge, and you send them a contract, and they either say yea or nay, and you move on. You're the provider.
Nelson, we needed confirmation from the school district as to whether or not they were going to keep the school bus driver employed, and we were not getting that until Cynthia came to us maybe four weeks ago. She was trying to get ahold of the gal at Central Office, and it took a very long time to even get that conversation started. So we literally found out two weeks ago that we needed to take on the responsibility of hiring that bus driver.
Harry?
Two weeks ago.
Okay. Maybe I heard something differently, but I thought during the summer rec program, we had put the driver on our insurance. We had to. If I remember correctly, you came to, Joel came to us and stated they had to be on our insurance, and that the town, Town of Pownell billed the rec, the school and the rec program, and then they reimbursed us.
That's correct.
Yes.
Right. That was the rec program. That was the agreement for the summer rec program.
Therefore, this individual has already been employed by the town.
That, that's a moot point. That's not the discussion.
But, and I understand the discrepancy that we're having right now, but going forward, this individual's already been on the town comp as, as an employee, part-time. We need, as a Board, to come up, we need to figure out what the hourly rate is, and so, and all these other things.
Yes, we know that, but we only learned about that two weeks ago.
So we can take and write a con, proper contract, submit it, and get it signed so we can move on.
Yes. And I agree with that.
Yes. We all agree on that, but we've only learned about that two weeks ago.
We're just trying to clarify that this, we weren't trying to...
I understand that, and we all know that there was a lot of miscommunication, but rather than sit here and everybody screaming holler at each other, if we can agree that, as a Board, we need to take and sit down and do a contract, send it to the school Board so we can get this going.
We, we directed Michael two weeks ago to do that. So he's trying to get in touch with SBSU to sit down with us to do that.
Okay, stop. You directed Michael to ask if they were going to employ a driver or not, and that evidently is a moot point. They're not, they're not going to...
So it falls on us, so we need to...
So it's on our onus.
No, she's already on our comp, insurance.
The town said, right, the town has voted, do a one-year trial, and that was on the past Select Board, or the present Select Board. We need to move forward.
Yeah.
And, and that's, I'm sorry, but rather than continue to throw the, and if, I'll still be more than happy to listen to everybody here, but I think that's what the Select Board needs to do.
Right. But we need, we need those, we need those figures. We need to understand the total dollar amounts.
That's, we're going to get that here.
Joel, Joel, go first.
I just wanted to say, Marlene, I don't know where you got 3,500.
Thousand.
A thousand. Or a thousand. The driver, I went to the driver when we sat down and did the budget, and she said her W-2 for the school year was 3,200.
3,200. I must have missed, I must have misheard you, so I apologize. But that's what I jotted down, so I was like, wow, that's way off.
Her turn. Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Lexi Vinsla. I am a, I'm the school nurse. I'm a parent, and I'm also taxpayer. So touching upon what Harry has said with moving forward, with coming up with a contract, you guys must have a town attorney, correct?
Correct.
That you could then have them create a contract, which could then go to the superintendent, which could then go to the Board for approval and, and signing, and it would have the rate and so forth.
Correct.
So maybe that's the route that you need to take is moving forward with, you know, having your attorney instead of, instead of putting it on the town administrator or a Board member.
He has to collect all the dollar amounts. We need to have a full accounting of the costs.
The lawyer just takes the information we provide and cracks the contract.
And puts it in legal language for everybody to sign.
Right. No, I completely understand that.
Unfortunately, we're ahead of the cart in this case here. So the accounting has already been developed. The accounting is your $13,000 that you started with this year. We need to recoup that $13,000 that we as taxpayers have paid in. If there's, I mean, and budgets and rates all happen on estimates and guesses at this point because we do not have anything to fall back on.
Again, Jim, two weeks ago, we learned we have to employ...
That's a new point. Get that out of your mind.
No, I'm not going to get it out of my mind.
We are now at the point of...
We need to know how much we have to charge. We had a contract in place for the summer of what we were charging.
Right.
That's completely changed. We need to know what those figures are to appropriately invoice.
Okay. Hold on, hold on, hold on. I want to hear what Nelson has to say.
It hasn't changed. The superintendent and the school board isn't going to tell you how to write a contract.
Exactly.
The contract is your business, is your amount of money you want to charge and your your, your cost. If you know what your insurance and all liabilities, you know what your cost is, that's what you're going to charge. You don't go up and say to the superintendent and those people say, hey, I want to make up a contract, can you draw one up for me so I can sign it?
Nelson, we don't have the costs in front of us. That's what I'm saying. I have not been presented anything telling me what the cost is for a bus driver to take people on a school bus. What's the liability insurance? What's the hourly rate? What's, what are the costs?
We don't have it right now, no.
We don't have it.
But we will get it and that way.
Okay, I know how contracts work. That's not what we're saying. We don't have those costs. We need those costs.
You must have a liability insurance now for all your drivers and you have part-time flowers in the winter, just like you'll have a part-time bus. So you have all this liability insurance.
So list it out for us.
Yes.
But you had that. They don't have it. You had the liability insurance.
No, we, we understand. We're going to, we have to do the contract. We understand that.
Yeah, but we're not going to vote on it right this, tonight.
But you're not, but you're not going there and having.
Right, correct. That's what we're saying.
That's not what we're saying.
Right.
I was agreeing with what Harry was saying.
All right, how about this?
We have a community member.
I just want to say something really quick.
Please state your name.
Melanie Harris. Uh, we realize that this is not going to happen right this second. We're not asking you to, to write the contract right now, so take a deep breath.
Oh, no, we know that.
Okay. Um, I think that we are all here in support of our children.
Yes.
And we, the people that voted for these buses, had our children in mind and we hope that you will also keep that in mind. And if you read through this, it says that we voted to authorize the select board to require, maintain and operate the two buses.
Correct.
So that's what the voters voted on and the children were our first and foremost. So we just would like you to all keep that in your mind.
We are 100% in agreement.
Okay.
Yes, we know the town has the onus to follow that.
So really quick, um, these are letters from some faculty members that could not be here tonight that wanted to come in support of this, along with, um, some letters from kids about how important field trips are for them. Um, so I will, Brian, I'll give those to you.
Thank you.
So you guys can read through those.
I guess I have a question. Why, why is there this, this misinformation that we're not in support of it? Because we've never said we aren't in support of, of doing this. The only thing we said two weeks ago when we found out we needed to hire the bus driver was we needed to know how much it was going to cost.
Hold on, Marlena. State your name, please.
Yes, I'm Sean Gardner, live on 41 Pross Lane. I, I think what we're talking, what these guys are talking about is they're, they're supporting the kids as much as they can, but they're not blaming you guys. They're just trying to get to the root of the problem.
Right.
They're not saying you guys are the problem or the SBSU up there is the root of the problem. They're just trying to get to the root so that it can all be dissolved.
But that's what I'm trying to understand is what, what is the problem? So, so there was miscommunication between who was supposed to employ the bus driver.
The problem now is we need, we need to vote to approve hiring the driver. We need to create a contract based on the rate of what that's going to cost the town to make sure that this is budget neutral.
Correct.
So I would say at this point, then.
I make a motion to.
Thank you.
Hire.
Well, I think, don't we have, do we, do we legally have to post the job?
I, well, she's already.
She's already, she's already.
Okay, hold on. I make a motion to continue with the present driver that we've had throughout the summer.
For the summer rec program.
From the summer rec program to continue being our school bus driver for the school activities as needed for the elementary schools and the other projects, other, uh.
Field trips.
Oak Hill and those stuff.
And field trips?
Yeah, field trips and stuff.
Okay.
Educational opportunities.
All right, uh, I, I, hold that thought. I, I want to kind of clarify the motion because I kind of feel like it was a little lacking.
Well, that's fine.
So we, we'll do that during the discussion, I'm sorry. So I will second his motion. We have a motion and a second to approve hiring the bus driver.
Okay, you have, okay, so now we have to, you seconded it.
Yeah, and now we're going to, we have a discussion.
Because you have clarification.
Yes, so, Michael.
If I may ask, Joel, do you have, um, contact with the driver and find out if they indeed want to be, want to do this?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's, that's all I need to know. Okay. Give me a contact.
It's not that hard. I don't understand why it's so hard. They have suspended. Angie Crowley, I'm also on the school board, I'm also a parent and I'm also a town tag player. This is very, very, very upsetting to me and I just don't understand why it's being made so hard when the people already voted to do this.
We're, we're attempting, we're attempting to pass it right now.
They already suspended until this is taken care of. No more field trips for the kids.
We understand that, that's why we're trying to address it.
Right.
We got a motion on the floor right now.
Yes, exactly, so. That we needed to hire the person.
Okay, hold on. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this?
We were going to clear, uh, Jim has a question.
Okay, and first of all, just kind of clear this whole thing up. First of all, get the word contract right off the table. Number one, when the town has dealings with other companies or anything like that, there is no contract in between. This is a friendly school-to-town situation. What you guys need to do within the first three days now, and I think Michael can do it because I know Michael has done a lot in the last six months and he's going to do a lot more for the next six months, is that come up with a rate. It doesn't matter what the rate is, come up with a rate. Guarantee to the school that you're going to continue with, you're going to hire the person, you're going to continue with field trips so that they happen. If there's one tomorrow, it'll happen tomorrow, all right? With the understanding.
That's what we're trying to do.
Yep. With the understanding, with the understanding that there doesn't need to be a contract. That ties up things. Contracts tie up things. You have a rate.
But it also protects the town legally.
Right.
Right.
So what are you protecting yourself? You're just coming up with a rate to say that you're going to charge them a certain amount.
I want a point of order right now because right now the motion is to hire, continue to hire an employee. That's what you're talking is the next step.
Yes, so I guess my clarification was adding that to it, but we can do that after. So we have a motion, we have a motion and a second to approve hiring the bus driver from the rec program to continue on as a temporary employee to do the field trips for this forthcoming year during our pilot program.
That's good.
Correct, for the school year.
Okay, so, all in favor, say aye.
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 I got another question.
Sure.
I know we're off this, but, um, in the future, is there some way we can put that on as a line item so that we're not coming back to this route here?
Well, this is a pilot program that we're looking at for a year. At the end of the pilot program, the board, whatever board is here, will evaluate it to see whether it was budget neutral, whether it was worth it for the town and then they'll go from there if they choose to continue it or not.
But what we could do is take and we'll know the exact numbers.
Yeah.
And we can put that on a new, on a new ballot item. And it'll be asked if the town wants to continue that for the future or disband it. I think, believe that was the beginning goal, why it was started as a one-year pilot program.
Right. And to Jim's comment, we never put the, the previous board didn't put a revenue account in because the only expense was going to be a, correct me if I'm wrong, Joel, we were only charging a very minimal mileage expense because, at the time, because we were only covering the gas and the maintenance of the bus, not, not a driver. So, so there was no revenue because we couldn't, we couldn't, we, we weren't looking to make revenue because there was nothing to make. There was no offset other than fuel and maintenance.
Our original intention was to keep it as cheap for the school district as we could.
Right, because we wanted you guys to be able to still have like free, you know.
And I think as you go into this and evaluate it at the end of the year, I think an important piece is the number of field trips that we went on compared to possibly another school that had a number of field trips that they went on, what did that cost compared to what, um, this situation.
Right.
Cost the, you know, the taxpayers. So I would compare that at the end of the year as an evaluation piece.
Both the other parts, we're not in the busing business either.
Right.
We appreciate your willingness and support of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
We apologize for the confusion and all that. That was never our intention.
So now that we've hired a bus driver, I have a question as to who's going to be coordinating the schedule of the buses for all the field trips?
That would be me.
Okay, and you work where?
I work at Pownell School.
Okay, so you're going to be coordinating with our office here?
Yes.
Okay, what about Oak Hill when they want to use the bus?
Oak Hill usually, uh, they will call, um, they usually call. Diana. Diana and then Diana will let me know what's going on there.
Okay, so it all kind of filters through you.
Yep, it filters through me, yes.
Okay, and I know that the senior citizen group in town also wanted to use the bus. So would they also filter through you?
Yeah, but they, they.
The kids get first.
First dibs on the bus.
Correct.
And that goes from there.
Okay, no, that's fine because I know that there was chatter before we came on as a board from the previous board that all these groups were going to be using the buses. So there was going to be a benefit for it, but now we have to look at who's coordinating the schedule for all that.
Exactly.
So thank you.
Thank you.
This is not a money-making situation though.
It's not supposed to be.
It needs to be budget neutral.
Joel and I never talk, right, Joel?
Correct.
You and I never talk, right?
Never talk. Absolutely not.
Some, who had their hand up?
I did, only just to clarify Marlena's question of how this kind of came about, why we're here. Um, so I believe it was Tuesday is when all of the field trips were suspended. There's one that we have set for tomorrow that we're all set with.
We've worked everything out.
Yep, um, that involved kindergarteners and so initially you had two kindergarten classrooms that were in tears because they thought that they had done something wrong and that's why they weren't able to go on their field trip, not understanding, you know, the bigger picture that.
And that's, and that's why as soon as I heard, I called our administrative assistant to get it placed onto the agenda and actually slowed down getting it posted because of it.
And it was all clarified very quickly for that field trip tomorrow.
Right, because information was getting back to us that it was rumored that the select board put a stop to everything and we were no longer supporting field trips for Pownell Elementary School.
That was a rumor.
Yes, but that's what, that's what, that's what came.
But that was a rumor that I personally heard from many people.
That came to all of us.
I've heard so much from this town last night.
Which was so not correct and we were just like, where did that come? So that came out of left field. We, we never said that. We're just trying to figure out the liability issue with hiring of a bus driver.
So I make a motion.
Yep, we already motioned.
Yeah, we hired the driver. Now comes the part about authorizing or drafting a contract, gathering the information.
Okay.
Have Michael and Linda and Joel.
They don't get that far due yet.
Please collate the numbers, um, needed to come up with an accurate.
This is all informational. We have a question or comment.
It's common. I mean, we're.
I'll second that.
Sorry.
Sorry, we got to finish the motion.
And we write the contract.
We have a motion and a second to approve, to have Michael write the contract, gather all the information.
And work with our town attorney.
Yep. Any discussion? All, no, you can.
All right, so we're right back to the contract again. Am I right?
We have to have a contract because of liability. That's something the school's going to require, that's something that we require.
So that we can invoice the school.
That's just life. It's, it's not going to hold up this process.
All right, so my next question would be then, even if these guys didn't have a driver for tomorrow, they would have a driver after tonight anyway. Am I correct?
Correct.
Correct. We can't charge them. We can't send them an invoice right now because we don't have an agreed-upon contract as to what we're going to charge them.
We could drive the kids and send a bill to the school without a contract. The school could say, nope, we're not paying it.
All right.
Correct.
Lexi?
So, quick question, um, since you're going to do a contract for the school district to utilize the buses, are you also doing a contract for Oak Hill and the seniors?
It will be a generic use contract.
Right. Okay, so that they will all be signing it to reimburse back.
Based on what we come up with the dollar.
Because I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to be just one entity and not another.
No. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Nelson?
Keep it, keep it simple.
Right.
Don't try to make a 20-page contract. One page should be, here's the rate we're charging, here's who we're billing, here's how you get to be able to use these buses. If you start making things that are 10 and 20 pages long, your lawyers will have it tied up for six months.
Jeepers, that's easy peasy. Why didn't you do it before you like, like left in February?
Hey, 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 hey.
We didn't own the buses yet.
As far as I know, the supervisor union wants proof of insurance.
We have that.
We have that.
Understandable.
We needed that this summer.
And that you have a driver and that she's legal.
Yes.
We will have that soon.
So that's all you need. That's all they're asking for.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mike?
Respectfully, ask them to answer the phone and return emails. I've been trying to get ahold of them to get them those things for weeks.
I pile up there and they answer the phone. I'm sorry.
I'll show you the emails.
This is what I was saying in the beginning where they're not communicating with us.
It's not going back.
We've been trying to.
And Cindy's even said to us before that she had trouble getting them to get back to her.
So anyway.
No?
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so new task for you, Michael. Get everything together, keep it simple, send it to the lawyer.
Can we have a drop dead date to try to get this done? I said six months is where we're going. Are we looking to do this in 30 days? Are we looking to do this in three months?
Michael, would it be unreasonable to have, expect you to have the information gathered, say by next Tuesday?
Joel?
Next Tuesday. Give us till maybe Thursday.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
While we can.
How about by the next board meeting?
Celebrate that holiday. When is that?
Um, two weeks from now.
Twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
So maybe by the 24th?
Well, we got.
Give you a little buffer.
Because the driver is employed, can, the field trips can happen?
Yes.
Yeah.
So the one that is happening, not tomorrow, because we're all set with that one, but the one that's happening, I think the week.
There's one on the 24th.
Where Mr. Phillips goes.
There's one on the 24th. Um, of October.
Yeah.
Have you already contacted anybody here on that one already?
The, the, well, no, unfortunately, it is a, it is a first grade.
She just notified us.
Well.
It's the first grade. They, they have put them, and it was approved by central office.
Okay.
And, uh, but, uh, then it was not approved.
Julie usually keeps me apprised anyhow.
So can, can that field trip go?
So if you have a schedule of dates already set for potential field trips.
Can we say October field trips are good to go?
Well, double check with the district that said it was okay, then said it wasn't okay. Make sure that they say it's okay again. So if you could maybe send us a copy of the approved dates so that we don't get into an issue with.
Who, who would I put the name on for the facts?
Whoever you usually communicate back and forth with Michael, just so that we maybe.
Put Michael and Linda.
Michael and Linda.
One of them will be here.
Yep, just so that we, we have it on file.
Please state your name.
Cindy Brownell.
Thank you.
Uh, I think what the Central Office is saying, that they just want to make sure that they're not the ones hiring the, the driver.
Right.
That was the whole thing.
Yes.
They know, if they know the town is going to be responsible and hire the, the driver because the town owns the bus, then I think Mr. Kalkine would approve it. He does not want to get into, well, the town owns the bus, the school's going to own the driver. Not happening.
But it would be nice if they could like communicate that in writing to us, because you're making an assumption, we're making an assumption, but we're not actually hearing it from Mr. Kalkine's voice.
The school board for her to speak in our behalf, for the whole board, so she has the right to speak and make.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Can you ask, can you ask Linda to send, uh?
Julie?
Julie.
Yeah, Julie, yes.
Um, a certificate of insurance tomorrow morning.
Okay. Linda, will you please send Julie a certificate of insurance tomorrow morning?
Then I can send it up to.
Before noon?
Yes. I'll do it. Thank you.
And I like to thank Julie.
Do you need copies? Do you need to send copies of like the driver's, driver's license with the?
Bus endorsement?
Yeah, with the bus endorsement on it? Joel?
What?
The, the driver's license has the bus endorsement on it or is it a separate cert?
Yeah, that I'm filing.
Do we have that on file?
She does.
You should do.
Can you send that to Julie also?
Actually, this is the same information that I've already wanted to get.
Central Office.
So, please coordinate with Julie on any information she'll need. We'll simplify that.
See what you have it? See what you have it?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Central Office has it, but if you wanted it over at the school, I, I know what I sent. I should resend it.
Okay, so send it up to the school and then they don't need it up at Central Office, then?
They've already have it.
They already have it.
Yeah, but if she has a copy of it, if there's any questions.
I can, I'll take care of it.
Yep.
So, yes, so take this offline, do all your coordinating offline, please.
Um, really quick, um, just to make sure that we were hearing everything correctly, that now that you guys have hired the driver, you have the buses, we're going to reimburse you, there's going to be a contract at some point, probably by the 24th. Um, but Central Office is good and probably Mr. Kalkine is, is good as well, now that he knows that they're hiring the driver and that they're going to have the certificate of insurance. Pownell School's going to have priority for field trips.
Pownell School gets first steps.
Yep.
Do you guys need to make that as a motion and, uh, just so that that is kind of?
We can, but I just want Cindy to, to restate as the voice of the school board that the Central Office is fine with all the information we're just gave?
I, you have to hear that from Jim Kalkine, as long as he knows, and he's told that the town is hiring the bus driver.
Okay, that's what I had just asked. Okay.
Okay.
So we need to have that from, from Jim.
So if somebody, I don't really care, who reach out to him and ask him to communicate that to us officially.
I'll call him. Yo, he answers my phone.
Okay. You and Michael can have a race to see who answers first. I'd like to make a motion that we, regarding the use of the buses, that Pownell Elementary School has first priority in the use of buses for their field trip during the school year.
I'll second that. We have a motion and second to approve Pownell School being first priority for use of the school bus for field trips. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Um.
Okay, so.
Don't leave, don't leave.
No?
No.
Oh.
Because we have a big audience.
So first, before we continue, thank you everybody for your support.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience and for your understanding of where we were and.
Okay, so, as long as we have a little audience here, so, just have a little statement that we want to read. So, uh, we just want to clarify that the board has entered into a contract with Graham and Graham, uh, for a forensic audit. Uh, we will be as transparent with information as we can, and we will keep the community updated on any findings as we are legally allowed to disclose. So.
What's the period of the audit?
I'm sorry?
What period are you auditing? I'm not.
What period are we auditing?
Period.
The period.
Oh, period. Um, I believe.
We're going back six years.
Six years, and if they need, if.
If they need more, they'll come back and ask.
They'll come back and let us know.
Who pays for this audit?
The taxpayers pay for this audit. However, uh, we, we do have insurance and.
Covering that situation?
We can, we can recoup, um, certain fees.
Okay.
Any other questions? Sorry, what?
He was talking his wife.
You can recoup any loss issue.
Correct.
If you find it, then it's the class's own.
Correct.
That is correct. Okay, so, is any, any other public comment questions before we move on?
Are you a public comment now?
Yeah.
Hi. Remember me? Hi, John Dewar. Um, I, I didn't get to come in right after the, um, town tag sale because, um, I had a little bit of surgery. Um, so I'm here now and I'm not going to get in front of the camera because you don't have to see my, um, my sling, et cetera. Um, so I, the tag sale went really, really well. Um, and I thank everybody who participated in it in any manner. Um, it was a lot of work, more than I anticipated, but it was well worth it. And I'm really excited to see how many people came to Pownell, how many people were out and about that day. Um, the weather goddess was kind, I thank her as well. Um, thanks to the select board for your support in it. Um, I would love to see it become an annual thing, um, but there would need to be a committee to create it, um, if we do it again. And then I just also wanted to say I really like the, the website at the bottom, that, that extra stuff that you're saying, explore Pownell. Um, so I want to thank you for putting that in. I find that really interesting and cool. And if there's anything that you would want to link, please take a look at Discover Pownell because you're more than welcome to link to anything like that. Like, for example, if you were to list farms in town, um, that's already done. So instead of doing the same work twice, you are more than welcome to, to use it however you like. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
If you all want to hang out, you're free to leave.
Or you can also stay and watch.
Or you can stay through the whole thing.
Just then. Okay.
No, not you.
If we.
We're not off the hot seat here.
All right. Nobody wants to watch civic government in action? Your children will be very disappointed.
You guys can all run for no more.
Good seeing you.
Bye, Anna Sue.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye, though. Bye, Julie. Thank you so much.
See you next time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We'll be chatting with you.
It's not that bad. Okay. Uh, moving on to Town Administrator's Report, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, I have, uh, been looking at payroll and accounting, electronic accounting system, payroll and timekeeping. And I've reviewed four companies, Cronos, ADP, Paychex, Zenefits. Uh, and the company Zenefits, I would not recommend. Uh, they're extraordinarily expensive and they cannot interface with, with Nemrick. Uh, I would recommend that ADP and Paychex be invited at some point to put on a demonstration of their payroll systems, their accounting systems. Both have very, very similar setups and both make pretty darn good presentations. Uh, we're talking for just the basics. Uh, Paychex is $4,628 a year. Uh, ADP is $4,193.45.
For a similar level of services?
Similar level of service. It's actually almost identical.
And what was Cronos during?
Cronos was $3,995, and I would caution you not to do that. I used them before and they reached the contract.
Okay.
So, uh, but I did go out and get the, get the quote. So, uh, uh, each of them, let, let them describe the futures. Let them put through the demonstrations to clear everybody out. I don't want, if I answer questions on everyone's concerns, I'll be here all night. But that, that would be for, do I have permission to ask them and we can talk about?
I'm okay with, I'm okay with getting more information from them. How's the rest of the board feel about it?
Yeah, that's fine. Have them come down and show us their product and talk about what it can do.
Yeah, I think.
We need to have them down pretty quick though, so that we can potentially put it in the budget for next year.
Yes.
Okay.
I want to understand it, of what it, what are we going to gain for the, for the value that we're going to think about investing?
Very, very, absolutely.
Yep.
So, yeah, go ahead, coordinate with them and, uh.
I'm sure they can do that risk analysis and the cost benefit for us.
Correct. Uh, next is, uh, want to discuss the budget process for this, uh, for this coming fiscal year. And, uh, I, I wrote everything down. So what I propose is your consideration and approval, uh, change in our budget process and preparation. And I'm doing this as, based on all the recommendation, uh, recommendations.
No, that was my cell phone. Sorry.
All right.
I will silence it right now. Pardon me.
Result from recommendation of both the external and internal auditors. Uh, really quick, probably early next week, if not late this week, uh, each supervisor is going to be given a binder containing fiscal year to date expenditures, which will be updated periodically.
Bob texted, said he may not be able to dial in.
Okay.
A budget worksheet from the treasurer and another section where they can, uh, log in, uh, information and put backup materials. Uh, we want to look to expand line items logically, be more transparent, breaking out cost centers into specific line items as recommended by the auditors. Now, no one wishes change. Most don't enjoy change. But based on what we hear from the auditors, we are citizens judicious and responsible, use of their hard earned money, be as visible and palpable as change, to change as we can.
Yep.
In general, we would like to research and document trends, cost increases and new processes to support budget line items. There will always be anomalies. Jim mentioned that they have nothing back to go on. You're, you're looking at it kind of guessing, but for the most part, we're going to be looking at trends, estimates, CPI, uh, and other costs. We'd like to be a lot more precise in our, our estimates. Again, expand items from cost centers. Uh, like to consider, uh, a stabilization fund. That would be asking the, the taxpayers. Stabilization fund would have 10% of the total budget. Uh, be one for the general, one for the road, with clear policy on how, what the cap is on that stabilization fund, what funds go in, and specifically what funds go out to cover items that during the course of the year, uh, were unforeseen. Uh, identify and implement the electronic timekeeping, establish online portal for employee, for forms and, and pay policies, place applicable town forms online to assess citizens who cannot make it to town hall during the day. Expand recreation budget to provide facilities, provide for opportunities for, uh, recreation to flow and flourish. As, uh, Jenny pointed out, the tag sale was a resounding success. Uh, most of our, all of our, uh, local, um, businesses were ecstatic over this. Like to consider increases in wages and hours of the health officer and zoning administrator. And I have statistics on that and be happy to show you. Uh, consider the adoption of fire and building codes. This will give opportunity for citizens to lower their insurance rates, increase property values. Uh, establish a separate line item fund for matching grants.
I have a quick question. What does establishing the zoning, I'm sorry, this one you just read?
Fire codes.
Fire codes. How does that impact the budget?
Sure. The insurance service organization, ISO, uh, is, provides a grading schedule based on the level of protection in your town. There's a grading for, uh, fire, uh, rescue. There's a grading for building codes and building services. We're 9-9. We have nothing. So we're at the maximum insurance rate. The more we do to incorporate codes, the lower that insurance rating is. And that's what insurance companies and underwriters look at when they, they set the rate for insurance.
Okay.
When you buy a home and so forth.
For the base rate for the town.
Okay. And then just a clarification on the recreation item. Were you talking about rec, the recreation programs that the summer rec program was offering? Or are you talking about like putting in like a recreation building down at the ball field type of a thing?
Looking at, uh.
And how does that impact?
Doing improvement, doing improvements to Center Street, uh, possibly doing some Strovich Park, uh, getting estimates on putting electricity for lights. Uh, we have estimates for a tent, porta potties, things of that nature. Have it more user friendly for fairs, concerts, things of this nature. And, and possibly, uh, consider doing some, uh, activities over the summer. And let, 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 let that fall where it may. Uh, we have a fund, uh, Linda pointed out, it has approximately $18,000 in it, and it's a low interest, or is it no interest or low interest?
It's just a fund right now.
Yeah, just a fund. And it's there to help, uh, people in hardship to repair their homes. Uh, it's approximately $18,000 in it. I'd like to resurrect that and, and set some guidelines for that and start helping people that need repairs in their homes.
How, how was it used in the past? Has it ever been?
I don't know. It was.
It was used in the past several years ago for people who had.
I think Nelson has something after that when you're done.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what Linda was saying.
Sorry.
It was used in the past because what?
It was used in the past to assist folks who maybe had a failed subject system. It was a loan that they repaid.
Okay.
The town.
Is that what you were going to say, Nelson? Jenny?
Zero interest.
Yeah, I tried to resurrect this last year when I was on the board, and it's, it's a fund that can only be used for this. So it can't, the money can't be transferred anywhere. It doesn't collect interest. It's just sitting there. And, um, all, people just need to know about it, and there just needs to be a process for people to apply to it.
So it's like a zero interest loan, I'm assuming, or is there, is there interest charged?
Yeah, I think it's, if I recall correctly, I think it was zero interest. Um.
And what happens if somebody defaults on it?
That I don't know.
I think that would be part of the process for setting it up.
Right. Want to continue.
It got created and no follow through?
Yeah. One of the first to borrow the money never paid.
Without anything in place, you can't technically recoup that.
And I'm guessing we didn't build and stuff, put a lien on the property.
If we didn't have anything in place ahead of time to see what we could do, there's probably nothing we could do.
As, uh, Jenny pointed out, I'd like to continue developing the highlights and happenings in Pownell portion where we, people move on the website. I had gone around, uh, over the summer, uh, like any husband having to walk behind someone who's looking at knickknacks.
Sure.
And, uh, look at, uh, books of what's happening in Southern Vermont and go under the Ps in the index, Pownell. Not one book I could find anything in Pownell. So we'd like to change that and raise interest. I'd like to continue vigorous participation in regional economic development groups. Uh, I want to be able to make our needs known on a regular basis. Uh, and I'll continue to do that.
And, and again, how, how are those things impacting the budget?
Impacting the budget by revenue. I can find, uh, information on, uh, regional grants. There's several out there at this point. We're discussing one this evening with you. This, what I'm telling you is not presented to elicit specific discussion, rather seek approval for a general plan moving forward to develop the budget with careful consideration of presented material through budget hearings. Not expected that you're all going to agree on everything. Uh, but this represents a path and a purpose for the community. It's not my personal purpose. I submit this for your consideration modification. Please consider it and modify it at your pleasure and your consensus.
I really like the point about getting those budget line items broken out. Um, as we've learned.
Yeah, I like that better. I like that too.
Right. And, uh, you know, as we've learned, doing, moving money from this line item to that line item is, is not appropriate. But, um, things that, you know, we have talked about in the past about if you've got a line item for training, only training money should be coming out of that and there should be documentation. So making sure that we have that stuff broken out so that we can say this is how much we spend annually on training.
And like you said, better track trends and make predictions for future budgets.
So is there a consensus to move forward in the general direction, keeping you updated periodically?
I think overall, I'm, I'm okay with him pursuing that.
Yeah, I'd like to.
And when we go to.
We need a sorry.
Do the final numbers, we can sit down and if we need to, we can pull stuff out.
And the intent is.
Because the select board has the ultimate say over it. I just want to make that clear to everybody.
And the intent is to bring Joel and.
Darcy?
Well, Darcy would be in March, but.
Oh, Joel and Tom.
Tom Chui and, and sit right here. And they have the backup material and they'll be able to answer the questions on why.
Right. Like this year, we took $2,600 out of your guard rail fund and moved it somewhere else. Does that mean that this year you're going to knock your guard rail fund down $2,600? Or do you think you're going to need that $2,600 again?
Well, there's actually one identified that that's why we put it in.
We will.
Right.
Yeah, there was one that was actually identified. We were going to put money in there for last year and it never happened.
There's posts on Lad Road, but no rail.
Yeah.
So there's a $2,600.
Be careful if you go off the road.
Those are the kind, the kind of things I'd like to avoid. I'd like to minimize the amount of, uh, line item changes.
We need to, we need to keep an eye on it and make sure we're minimizing the impact of the taxpayers.
And then do the exact same thing in March.
That's what we're watching here is the taxpayers.
Right. We, we need to be able to show the accountability of every penny.
And that's exactly what I'm, that's exactly what I'm looking for in doing. Now, I'm not going to guarantee it's going to be level funded or even, uh, not more, but, uh, you know, we want, we want to have something that makes sense and that has, is something that, you know, the, there's, there's an end game. People are going to see something from it.
If I, if I can just interject, I.
I'm sorry, who are you?
I really.
He's already introduced himself.
I really agree with what Michael's hopefully going to do. I mean, there's two ways of coming up with a budget. And I think in the past, the budgets have been made up a lot of times with, what did we spend last year? Let's just put that in this year. I think what Michael is hopefully coming to is, let's start with a zero budget and have the people of this town, not the town, but the supervisors and everyone, tell us what you need to spend on, but document what you think you need to spend on. Yes, put in some numbers in there of what you think. They don't know what's going to happen, anticipate, but it's now time to come to a zero budget to come up to what we need.
Correct.
Yep.
Can you touch base really quick on the, um, the 10% fund you were talking about? What was it?
I, it's called stabilization.
Stabilization.
I, I.
Would that be in lieu of what we call the contingency fund now, where we just rape it every single time we, that's, I'm sorry, that was a really bad review.
Yes, that was.
That was a terrible word. We rob it every single.
That's $5,000 in the budget. The idea is to become more precise and more dependent on, on the numbers that we establish, stick by them. And then you have a pool of money that has specific, specific, uh, uses that you can authorize. A vehicle breaks down and there's a big outlet.
Like our truck stuck on Darkwood Road.
Right.
Yep. Yeah. So, so anything like that, that, that can be used for. And then specifically every year something's moved into that budget.
The roof starts to leak or something and you need to replace it. Okay. That, okay, that makes sense. So we, we wouldn't have the contingency fund anymore. We would have the stabilization fund. So we would just be.
It would have a new name and would have more stricter guidelines.
That's what, yeah.
Stricter guidelines.
Stricter guidelines.
Yeah, there's not, there's not going to be, you're going to look at it and go, is this something that's an emergency? Do we need to spend it? Why do we need to spend it?
And does it meet the criteria for spending?
Doesn't meet the criteria. You will determine the criteria at the behest of the citizens.
Okay.
And I went through this with Vermont Leaks and Citizens and Town, spoke to them and went through this and made sure that this was legal in Vermont. In fact, they encouraged it. So, uh, I'll, I'll be making contact with them in order to get some guidance on setting it up to make recommendations for it.
I'd like to make a motion that we support Michael with this budget process this year.
I don't really think we need to make a motion. This is just normal budget process. This is just him.
Well, it's a new, it's a new way of doing it. I just want to make sure it's very clear that we're, we're supporting this, just to alleviate any pushback.
I don't want to make a motion that binds us to agreeing to what they bring for the board, because ultimately it's on the select board to make the final determination for the budget that we present to the voters.
We're not agreeing, we're, I made a motion to, to support the process, the new process. To prepare the budget. Because this is a new way of doing the budget. They haven't done it this way ever before. Yes, Nelson.
Nelson?
It sounds like you're talking about your budget process and when you'll be working on your budgets, when I think you're going to be debating this and talking about it, because then you're going to have numbers in front of you from each department. At that point, you'll make a decision whether you start at zero with certain things or whether some things you don't. Just try to say that you're going to do zero budgeting at a time like this without having your budget in front of you and working on it, I think is probably not the.
I didn't say that.
That's not what we said.
I didn't say that at all.
We said, we're going to take the budget and instead of doing what we've done in the past, which is just take last year's numbers and dump it into the line item, we're break, we want them to break out the line items very specifically. Currently, there's a line item called training. The items being paid for out of that budget have nothing to do with training, have to do with cell phones. Why do we not have a budget line item called cell phones?
And you do.
That's what we're talking about.
We're, we're, we're going to, yeah, we're going to be acting on the recommendations of our auditors.
Yep.
And try to gain better control and better identification in the budget line items on what's what. And so I'm fine with authorizing Michael to do this.
To be clear, I met with the auditors. We met and talked about this extensively, so it's not like I just pulled it out of my head.
Which auditors?
Internal auditors.
Internal?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So policies, we've got kind of a stack of policies to go through that you've had copies of for some time. The first one is balanced budget policy, and this is recommended by Vermont Lees and Cities and Towns, fairly straightforward.
He sent it to us, so.
What's the recap of that?
So the, the item on here that I still have a question about was the line item transfers. And I, I want you to, I would recommend that we go back to the internal auditors, our external auditor that's coming in to do our annual. And the folks, I don't know if it's at Passover VLCT. I know that they cite some state statutes.
Yes.
But everybody keeps saying you shouldn't be shifting money around on the line items.
I don't, I don't, I absolutely agree with that. I mean, to do that excessively is not.
Right.
It means that we're not doing something.
And because there's still a provision in there that the, the board must vote on it, I don't think it, I don't think the board needs to vote to take money from line A and move it to line B.
I believe they do.
No, 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 what I'm saying is we shouldn't be moving it.
Yeah, I understand. No, I understand, okay.
Yeah, we shouldn't be moving it period.
You want to leave that, you want to close that door or you mean at some point.
I want to know what best practices from actual accountants, municipal accountants say, and I want to see the law that states that we can do that.
No, I'm not, I'm not going to say professional or anything, but I think the purpose of the transfers is that if you have a line item that you earmark for training and nothing happens in training for a whole year, I wouldn't want that money to sit there under training when you're overspending a line item somewhere else, because you lose control. The reason for the transfers is that you want to make sure that you do not overspend your budget. Now, it all depends on how you're going to show this information in an annual report. In the past, and I think this past year it got changed, Ellen put in, what was the original budget of what was presented to the board, I mean, presented to the people? And then there's another column that says, what was the actual that happened after all transfers? It's explainable to say, yes, this is what we put in for training, this is what we ended up because we had to do transfers, but the control is to bottom line, not overspend the budget.
Correct. What we're having trouble with is identifying when we move money from the training budget. Say theoretically, we take $2,600 out of the training budget.
Yep.
We can't say where we put it. There is no easy way of saying, some went here, some went there. It's just, was absorbed somewhere.
You have a count, come up with account numbers.
Right.
That's what we're working on.
We're taking it from number one and putting $50, taking a hundred from here, putting 50 here.
But again, to your point, we've all.
The treasurer or your bookkeeper is the one that's supposed to present it to you in a way that's written out, and it's documented in the meeting for that transfer.
Correct.
Move to line number.
But we need to have more discussion because we've also been informed by our internal and our external auditors that we shouldn't be moving money around like that. So perhaps they have a different methodology of how we're supposed to document that. So I would just like clarification on that, if you can touch base with our internal auditors.
Hey, the next item is something I came up with myself. I was looking at trash garbage ordinance, and there's one written, and there's, there's actually one that was presented to you. It's kind of on hold, but in going around as, as deputy health officer, I'm finding that we have folks that I've literally asked, why don't you take your garbage to, you know, best, best price in town? Well, week to week, social security. You know, I, I don't have a lot of extra money to be spending. So I thought that we would produce something that was based upon 2019 poverty guidelines, and there's a scale list out. If someone can present themselves as being in this economic situation, that we give them a break, list out what they need to give us to show that they're having difficulties, and then for six months, make it renewable, six month transfer pass, $10, and a flat dumping per load of $5. I went through this with Tom Shuey, and we both agree that, you know, our fees are going to go up getting rid of the garbage, but you know, if we face the reality that we have people that can't afford to get rid of it, and we have it sitting and causing, potentially causing health problems, be proactive and try to help people to get rid of it.
I have a question. How come we as a town don't incorporate trash removal as part of our taxes that we pay?
Lots of money. That would be big.
That's what I'm wondering, because I, you know.
Yeah, I have to cost that out for you.
I pay for my dump pass and then I pay for Tam to pick up. So you would think that the amount of money I pay annually for those two things should pay for pickup through my taxes.
Oh man, that would go way up.
And then the whole community would.
Because we would need to buy garbage trucks. We would, we would need employees to drive that.
Couldn't we consult, couldn't we contract with Tam? I mean, they're the ones that I have picking up my, that I pay to pick up my trash.
Twice.
I don't think there's anybody else.
Twice since I've been here, I've asked, and he said, you don't want to do it, you can't afford it. That was the response I got from him without even costing it out.
I think we should see some costs.
Okay.
I mean, because there's going to be costs regardless. The town's either going to eat the cost for a select group of people to be paid for by the town to have their garbage picked up anyway.
We don't have that many city streets that, like.
I would rather contribute to people that can't afford it in my taxes and give them a break versus paying an organization like, and I'm not going to mention the name, to pay for their driver, to pay for their fuels and everything else. I have no problem, first of all, I ask you, do you buy a dump sticker?
Yeah.
Why? Because you have someone else picking up. Do you have to buy a dump sticker?
Well, we do because we're, yeah, because we have larger items that we have to bring to the transfer station.
So the bottom line would be, it's cheaper for me to take it to the dump and drive down there and pay my low fee and everything else than to have and hire someone outside. That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, I got to say, I'm fine with kind of the setup we have now. I mean, we already take a loss of the dump now, every year.
So I think it would be nice to see the fees on both sides. Night.
I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to talk to them.
Yeah, you can cost out what we collect or what we don't. When I was sitting on the board, the taxpayers were paying about $70,000 over what we were collecting over there. So the taxpayers are already paying for people's trash, and I agree with you though. I think if people need it, we should be helping.
Yeah.
So that number's going to go up? There's no doubt about it?
Yeah, it has to.
I don't know what.
Yeah, either, yeah, either, either way, it's going to go up.
No, I like the, I like this idea, to give a break to lower income people.
Oh, he's.
No, it was in our, it's in our folder. It was in mine.
I don't think I have it.
You probably have it in your folder, leftover from one of your previous meetings.
That's why I don't take anything out of it.
Well, they were tabled. I was hoping maybe you would have passed them in.
Usually if I leave with it, I leave with the whole folder on it. That way you have to call me and yell at me.
So how would we?
Yeah, it doesn't outline it in what documentation we require.
Yes, in the back.
Yeah.
Talking social security statements, rent, mortgage paperwork.
I should have flipped page two.
Utility bills, car, truck payment, medical bills, unemployment insurance, those types of things.
Okay.
We, we just.
Okay, just a quick thought, are we, is there going to be a cap for the flat dumping fee per load? A cap on how many loads they're allowed to do at that flat rate?
You know, that's a good idea. I didn't think.
I'm only saying that because then this could turn into somebody can then take advantage of the town and do themselves a little business out of it.
That's great. I like that idea. I'll talk to Tom on that.
And how large does a truck weigh?
So what, it's kind of like two of you sitting down at a restaurant and ordering one meal and splitting it. Usually you get an upcharge from the restaurant for doing that. You want to make sure that it's only coming from one person.
Right, I don't want to see somebody who qualifies for this bringing in a two-ton dump truck down to the dump.
Three times a day, every day, their dumps open.
I think our transfer station personnel would pick that up right away.
They might pick it up, but if we don't have, but if we don't have anything written against it.
I know, I'm just.
People will say, hey, it doesn't say I can't do it.
Did Tom have any idea what extra, extra fees that would add?
No, we wouldn't have any idea, because it's based on usage.
Yeah.
Well, I understand that, and we'll, we'll probably want to look at the weight of his poles.
We could track it.
And how would it impact?
We need to take a look at the weight of his pole.
Because Tom, Tom keeps track of every dump, dump number and how much comes in.
He's got an extensive spreadsheet. One, one of the things I suggest is, when you have programs like this that are new, you start them on three-month trial bases, and then you track the data, and then you can come back and make adjustments.
Okay.
So I'll get the remaining information from that and come back to you.
Okay.
And.
And I'm guessing the information that people will be submitting will have to be based off of their previous year taxes and then current.
Correct.
Payroll stubs and stuff like that.
Yeah, we just, through the state, emergency repair sewer line, somebody just doesn't have any money. So. Process for reporting claims of sexual harassment or harassment, and this is not the harassment policy, this mirrors the policy.
Correct.
It's a fillable form, and I got a lot of good input from you. And this is so that someone can anonymously fill out a report and have it followed up on.
Okay.
So for your consideration, possible passing.
Okay, are we passing the dump thing?
No, he's going to gather more information for us and bring it back to us.
But this, this is kind of important. It's gone back and forth a couple of times. Ms. Cullen has made some significant input on this.
And this was a recommendation from the VLCT to take it out of the policies so that the, so that if there was.
I remember we started having.
If there was content change, it didn't impact the reporting change, and reporting shouldn't be in the policy.
Like Karen highlighted on that also.
Yep.
Were we going to have this potentially be part of the employee portal for forms?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Because being anonymous, it's kind of not anonymous if the person has to ask for the form.
Yeah, and interim, like to send all these types of forms to supervisors and personnel that, yeah, they can, they can access them easily.
They can have a couple printed and people can scrub.
And they're fillable, so you can, they can email right back if they need to.
And if they can't or don't know how to use it on the, online, they can just manually fill it out.
Would there be consideration for a vote on that tonight?
Well, let's let Harry look through it and we'll go from there.
Something we need.
Well, it's something we should have as part of the, the HR policies, the recommendations.
That's because Michael knows half of us wear glasses.
16-point font, thank you, Michael.
I haven't seen the engineering reports. Got to be Mr. Magu to read those things. Terrible. That's when you're tiny, it's like you need a micron microscope.
And they say the standard is nothing less than 10-point font. They go in at like 8.5.
Yeah, it's really terrible. You don't want to know what the, you don't want to know what the price is.
I'm okay with that. I just didn't know if there should be an alternate in case you're not here.
There was, I thought.
Just a, just town administrator.
Or any member of leadership.
I thought I had an alternate in there.
Is it under the paper clip?
Listen, son.
At the very top.
You know, actually, I believe.
Please return to you.
Yeah, I believe the, the alternate is listed on the, on the actual policy.
Well, I know that, that's what I meant.
It's not listed on the policy.
It should be the town administrator or any member of the select board, the governing body.
That's what I was, because I know somewhere there was other verbiage there.
Would you consider approving it with the caveat that I put that, that on there?
Yes.
Yeah, I would, I would approve it with the caveat that he puts the verbiage in or the governing body.
The governing body.
Governing body is fine. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the form for reporting harassment, process for reporting harassment.
Second.
With, with the change to add governing body as an alternate.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the process for reporting claims of harassment and sexual harassment with the added, with the suggested changes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Another policy that had sort of languished was the ethics policy. I've taken Vermont Lees and Cities and Towns, looked around the internet, there was discussion and concern that an ethics policy in public administration and pub, and the public sector is not something that's, that's normally done. Having an advanced degree in public administration, I suggest that's not true. And I have over 25 citations of different texts and studies, American Society of Public Administration, and other areas that wholly endorse an ethics policy within town government. And again, this is for your consideration. This was mailed or emailed to you.
That was emailed to you a while ago, right?
Yes.
I support.
We've tabled it a few times.
Right, I support moving forward, but I do know that we had talked about reviewing it and then looking, we had given some examples of some municipal ethics policies we wanted to compare. Do we still want to do that, or do we want to vote tonight on this, on, on what's there?
How does this, this one that you have drafted here compare to what VLCT offers for a model policy?
It follows it fairly closely. I use some different language. I've found some things that.
Because just to be able to get something on record, I'm almost just saying, let's adopt VLCT's model policy just to get something on the books, and then if we decide to change it, we can go back to it.
You know, I don't think they have an ethics policy.
They don't. They just have that small little section at the end of the conflict of interest policy. But at town fair, I talked to the gentleman who's in charge of the Vermont Ethics Commission.
Yeah.
And he even said that they're pushing at the legislative level to come up with a specific ethics policy separate, because to what Michael and Bob both said, or maybe it was just Michael, that there, there's only that small little brief section at the end of the conflict of interest policy, and it doesn't cover the breadth of ethics violations and complaints that their office is getting. And so they're trying to take all the complaints and filings with the Ethics Commission to come up with an ethics policy to socialize out to all the towns.
It's a shame our representative's not still here. We could throw some pressure at him.
There we go. He high-tailed out of it quick. He saw it was on the agenda.
I'm more accepting this for right now.
Okay.
Because we can always go back and make changes.
That way we have something.
Do I make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the ethics policy.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second to accept the ethics policy. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 The next policy would be the website policy, and I make a recommendation to be tabled to Mr. Jarvis's back. I was unaware he wouldn't be here.
He was supposed to call in.
He, he had substantial input on this, and not to, not to have that be a disservice.
Okay.
The next item is, again, some things that were discussed by, thank you.
Stop the sign one.
Thank you very much. Purchase orders, not a very widely popular thing, but you know, I was thinking about this as I was looking through the, the warrants. Lot of the invoices come back and, you know, you have unit number and you have some codes and so forth that you don't know what it is, where, where it goes to. Again, this is a fillable form, and it would come with a set of instructions on the proper way to fill it out and so forth. And this too was highly recommended by the auditors.
So we don't have one that we use now?
No.
Okay.
No, I think Joel had commented on it when it was brought up before, that the town tried it in the past, but didn't like it very much. No, I think Joel had commented on it when it was brought up before. The, the town tried it in the past, but didn't like it very much. I like it. I mean, the auditors are the ones recommending this to make a circular closed loop regarding all purchases and all expenditures. So I mean, you've gotta start with something. You've gotta explain why you're spending the money, what it's for. You've gotta have your receipts and your documentation and then the invoice and the payable.
And as anything, again, in three months, we come back and look at whether this is successful, not successful, if not why, what needs to be changed.
Yeah, I think all we have right now is anything over like three thousand that have to come to the board for.
I just wanna make sure it's not gonna negatively impact. Now Joel made a, a point, the last time we talked about this was, you know, he could be out in the field and he needs to go buy a grass seed. Does it mean he's now gotta come in the office and fill it out? No, that's not what it means. Get your receipt, come back in the office and fill one out and attach your receipt to it.
We did it while with the school and we ended up going with blanket POs. We did so much for NAPA, so much for Delurge, you know what I mean? Did it that way. So it wasn't, I don't know, it wasn't really like doing an item per item, would you say, Jim?
What do you mean by, by doing it for NAPA, like NAPA auto parts? So if you had to go by-
You'd think, well, maybe you'd spend three thousand dollars at NAPA this year and you'd spend five thousand at WCA.
No, that, that's not how it works.
No, I, I understand that.
Yeah, this is for actual purchases.
Correct.
It's just a check, like you turn in, you fill that out, put, attach the receipt to it and then when the bill comes in, you have a document so you can put them together. It's a check and balance, that's all.
That way we're not just paying bills and we're not really sure what the bill was for.
Unfortunately, a purchase order system like this won't work for someone that works in maintenance. I mean, it's- Majority of what he does, it's more to protect the spending from other departments that come in there and say, "Oh, I'm just gonna call up and I'm gonna order some paper." No, you don't order the paper because it's gotta go through maybe the town administrator to say, "Okay, yes, you need the paper" 'cause someone over here may be ordering paper. You get it together, you get a cheaper price.
Correct.
So it's more of the vehicle to say, "Don't buy something on your own. Get the approval because it's, we gotta make sure it's in the budget." Once it's approved with a purchase order, then the bill comes in. It makes it so much easier for the person that's paying that bill to say, "Okay, here's the purchase order. Here's the account number. Pay the bill. It's been received. Done."
Right. And I mean, it, it can work in maintenance as well so that we know that if this dollar amount's being charged to the road fund, what is it? What was it for? Why, why are we paying it?
To do up a purchase order after the fact makes no sense. A purchase order is a-
I was gonna say the same thing.
A purchase order is a contract with the person you're buying something for to buy it. If you need, if you need a vehicle to find out what it is, they should be able to write right onto the invoice what it's for and the account number and then you know.
But it's still a checks and balance.
Right. Our internal auditors have requested it as a checks and balance.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a way of checking the balances. I work in maintenance and I, we have to take and fill these out also.
Even if you already bought five thousand dollars worth of parts to fix all the trucks, you gotta-
If I gotta buy something like that, I gotta get it. It's a different process. But for smaller stuff.
You're on a much larger scale.
Yes.
So that's-
I'm good with that. Do you support that?
Karen, do you support it?
Yeah, I, I live it every day, so I understand it.
We do it through our mail for everything. So.
And at the state level, same thing.
It's really annoying when you have to fill one out for like a buck fifty.
Yes.
But they wanna know, yeah, and they wanna see the receipt. They wanna make sure that you spent it.
Everything's accounted for. Yeah, I'm fine with it.
There's an awful lot of things that we're getting back from these folks that, that are being-
Well, that and it tells the auditors that when they're seeing the bill come in and the check for the bill, they know it's been approved and that it was approved. And I'm just thinking of that thing where we communicated that we weren't gonna do something and then a bill came in and the auditors were like, "Wait a second, I thought we weren't doing this because we didn't communicate to them."
So it's, the next would be vacation time off request. Again, a fillable form, you know, this, this too. Now, if you get the electronic payroll and timekeeping system, this goes away. That's automatically calculated. So if somebody puts in, you know, "I'm on vacation today," it automatically shows how much they've used, how much they have left and-
In an automated system, their manager has to approve it, so.
Correct. You have an administrative overlook, override, come to the manager.
And then the auditors would have the documentation when they go to validate the warrant that the vacation time was pre-approved. I'm fine with that too. Karen, Karen? Hold on.
Hold on. Yeah, we haven't discussed it yet.
Okay.
Can I see it?
Oh, absolutely. How's that? You're kidding. Go ahead.
Jerk.
I was gonna say, he emailed them all to us.
Yes. I remember seeing that.
I know, I know.
Tiny screen.
I forget you can only look at it on your phone. And you've been without your computers.
I remember seeing that a while ago.
Yep.
This is basically the same book we use.
In the military, you had half a dozen signatures. You had to get, from the chits, you had to use the same ones.
So if I'm Joel's employee, I would fill it out, Joel would sign it and then he would send it to you for signature or for notification or for placement and with the warrant or what?
Send it to me. Approval denied.
The only, assuming you know, somehow you have track of the guy's sick time and leave time.
They do here.
Computerized.
It's all computerized.
No, that's, like, that's, so the final check, the only way you, you would basically deny somebody is if you saw that they didn't have any time. You called Joel up and said, "Hey, by the way."
Or if it's a situation where half the road crews already got that particular day off.
Well, then Joel would already catch that.
Right, so if I had no more vacation time and I requested it off-
What happens at my mill is you get, a guy puts in for a day off at the end of the year, at the beginning of the year, then halfway through the year, somebody else puts in for that day off. It might not get caught. And then suddenly a third person puts in for the same day off four months later and suddenly you've got three people the same day off in a department of four people.
Brian's running the mill.
Pretty much. Been down that road before.
The next items are, oh, you haven't even really, you're okay with the pay.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Yep, we all agree.
There was a municipal planning grant of Arlington and Dorset.
Are we off of?
No.
Fillable forms?
No, we're off fillable forms.
Okay, weren't you doing a fillable form for our approval of overtime? But that was one of the ones that you emailed us?
Yeah, but I'm not, I haven't-
It's not ready yet? Okay.
I was gonna say, I don't see it on here.
Yeah.
Well, he just had the fillable forms.
I'm trying to go slowly, but.
Okay.
Arlington and Dorset got applied for and approved for a municipal planning grant and it is a regional housing bylaw survey. Absolutely no cost to us. It would be simple endorsement of the town of panel because the results of this would benefit us. And we're already, we already have a municipal planning grant. We already are looking at our zoning, zoning bylaws. But it's more a gesture that you, you support the program and you would get, you would get all the benefits of the materials that they find when they go through the process, so.
So is it a municipal planning grant for what?
It is examine regional housing bylaws. And they're looking for simply, you endorse it, you know, go Arlington, go Dorset.
We have a question. Please state your name, sir.
I'm Fred Miller, I'm sorry. Is that a little bit redundant? We do already have a-
I agree, Fred, but basically this is, this is, as an endorsement, is basically just endorsement from the town that they, they approve of this and they, we would get the benefit of seeing some of the results too, particularly some of the comparatives that other communities have compared to what we do. So it's, it, no cost, no effort.
You're getting data that can be used by the planning commission while they're, while they're working on the, on the new bylaws, on the revision of bylaws?
This, it's not that, you, you would have access to the data, but you're not getting data. Nobody's saying you have to adopt it. Nobody's saying that, you know, when you get it, you have to address it. It's just you basically can turn on the computer and look at what they're, they achieved for data at any point in time. Again, it's-
It's no cost to us, but it provides us data points of our town compared to Dorset and Arlington?
Other, all the towns in south.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's- Yeah, and it's, it's not, there's nothing, they're enforcing us to do nothing. It's just simply, we'd like to endorse their efforts to look at the regional picture and it would be, require a signature if you so chose to support that.
There's no cost to us. I mean, there's, I think it's valuable information. Regional housing goals.
Regional housing bylaws.
I know if they're going to take their site visits to-
They will survey current housing regulations in the downtown and village center areas of its members municipalities and make specific recommendations for bylaw improvements to help each community achieve goals for more quality, diverse housing in historic centers. Municipalities will receive BRCRC's assessments, which will be summarized in a final report. That's what it specifically says.
I imagine it might touch on some things related to what, what you had mentioned earlier with insurance. If we don't have certain regulations in place that would decrease our insurance rating or not, right? Correct, our ISO rating. No harm.
I was wondering if they actually gave us any numbers there. That's what, I was curious.
Not right now, but once they do-
Yeah, once they, it'll be summarized in their final report, but it doesn't give a date on when the final report will be.
So they'll either make us go, "Oh, we're not that bad" or it'll make us go, "Oh."
I'm fine with it.
Yep.
Should we make a motion to authorize signature and endorsement?
Yeah.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to authorize endorsement of the municipal planning grant application for fiscal year 20 for the BRCRC. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sign that, sir. I'll take it back.
You need a signature from us all?
Please, thank you.
I believe one, right?
Yeah, just one line.
Okay. Ted, you're it.
And I'll take this one because I'm gonna be sending it right off. The last item, hiking trail dedication, Husick Bend Hiking Trail, which is adjacent to the wastewater transfer facility, is October nineteenth, Saturday, from one to three P.M. They're gonna have-
Saturday what?
Nineteenth, from one to three P.M. And would, would encourage you to come down and take a walk on-
Is that gonna be posted on our website?
I believe it was.
Okay.
You can't hide in the corner. I can't see you.
You can come sit in the chair.
All right. Yes, Jenny?
So there's gonna be a whole lot of activities around it. There's a storytelling activity where you go from one point to another to continue the story. There's gonna be, I just sent out a release on this today. Oh, can you read the, do you have it?
I'm unsure if I have it.
So there are several different activities. They are still looking for volunteers to help with parking and directing people to where to walk to start. All the activities are gonna happen, more than one, so that you can participate in more than one, should you want to. If you want seating, you should bring it. There is gonna be some food and beverage supplied by the municipal panel. So it should be a fun day. We just need good weather, so if you could make a motion for that.
Motion for what?
Make a motion to the weather god, yes?
If it does have bad weather, will we be an alternate?
Sunday is the rain date.
Okay.
Sunday, the twentieth, is the rain date. I'm not actually on that committee. I just happened to hopefully release it soon.
Okay.
It's on Facebook. You can get the details on various Facebook pages.
I believe I've shared that.
I don't have anything else in our report, but the next old business item.
What about the energy fair?
Energy fair, we already discussed.
Okay, I thought that, that was the one with the little tiny house over there.
And we do have one more thing. The letter that we, you were gonna send to the FBSU, but they may, that may be a moot point now.
I think that's a moot point. I don't think that's needed at this point.
Bye, feel better. Bye, Rosemary. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, ladies. Have a great evening. Night.
Understood. I was gonna say something like that.
Okay, so that's a moot point, so we'll just cross that off. Okay.
Okay, so moving on to old business, approval of loan in advance of clean water revolving loan.
In, in reality, you've already approved this project. However, it's gone through several iterations through the state, through the engineering company, identifying specific tasks they had to do and funding levels and it's, it's done. And it was sent off, it was approved. We got the, got the word back, the financing is there. Setting up a conference call with Tom Brown at the state, Ellen, myself and hopefully we'll be able to sit on that to go through how that loan would be processed. So everything's submitted. The idea is to get, get to work right away so we avoid frozen ground. So we're looking, hopefully, if you approve next week, to get out and look at the leading edge of that area and see what we have to do to cut so the drilling machines can get in. So that would be our very first step. So hopefully, again, you know, it just, it's a lot of money. Wanted to make sure you knew what was going on.
This is for the gentleman that was here the other day?
Correct. Two, yes.
Now, I don't remember us approving a contract with him directly.
We, we authorized Michael.
Yes. We have a signed contract.
Yeah, he is the authorized.
Thought we were waiting to hear back from the state as far as the owners, since some of the work wasn't done and recouping some of that fund.
And that actually happened during this process. There's nothing stopping that. Nothing's stopping that from happening. And I resent the paperwork as well, so.
So Michael, are you asking the board to pre-approve a loan if necessary in advance or?
No, we, we don't have to do a pre-approve loan. We don't have to do that. They're gonna do a week turnaround. So we'll get, get the money within a week of submitting the PO. So initially, we thought we have to have Ellen go out and get a loan for a substantial amount of money to pay.
Yeah, this one for like ninety-five thousand or something like that?
Yeah, we don't have to do that. That's, that's not necessary.
That's why I'm asking the question. I don't, I don't think we went to that point. And I don't-
No, we were kinda hoping that the funds would become available before we have to take out a loan.
But before all this, this is the amended contract. We already have a contract signed and approved.
Right. I remember the initial.
Yeah, and this is the amended contract, so.
So there's no additional funds from the initial for this one at this time?
No. This is a specific pot of money. It's part of the revolving loan. And once that's processed, again, there's a fifty-fifty match and you have a five-year abatement if you choose to do that. So what will happen is he'll start going and doing his drilling and he'll get to a point, he'll invoice us for something. We submit the invoice to the state. The state pays it. It goes in the bank as part of our loan that we have to pay back at some point.
I just want an actual dollar amount because-
Two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, eight hundred and eighteen, two hundred and thirty-nine, eight eighteen and thirty-two cents, I believe. I may be on the fence about the thirty-two cents, but it's roughly two thirty-nine.
And what's the year, the number of years it has to be paid back by?
Jim, I just honestly got it on paper lock. I don't remember.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I just can't remember that, honestly. But you could debate the payments for five years and it's a low interest rate, like one, one point something percent.
Okay, but this'll, this'll increase our budget. That was why I asked that question that way.
Yeah, at some point, it's gonna increase our budget, absolutely. But, you know, we're mandated, we have to do it. And I'd rather do it at one point, yeah. There's no, we don't have a choice.
Now, I know that the gentleman that was on the phone and the gentleman that was here both said that they were going- Right, who said that they were going to revisit documentation at the state level 'cause we brought that up.
On that before we forward on this.
Right, so, well, they, well, he originally, the gentleman on the phone originally said that, no, there is nothing that states the state was on the hook to-
He said he had to check.
He had to check.
But then we brought up, no, we are pretty sure that we had documentation saying that they were and he said he's gonna have to go back and look again.
Right, and he never stated that they were not.
I sent it to him. My, my suggestion is because we, if, if we hold off, we're gonna have a big problem because if we hit June, now we gotta reapply for this. It took over a year to get this to begin.
I understand that.
We can do that. We can do the process of looking into that concurrently.
Right, we need to.
Yeah.
As long as we're gonna look tight and, I mean-
And I, I'm not suggesting we-
So if we could add a, a line item on our, on the town administrator report, a standing line item to update us on, I don't know, what is it called, Harry? The A&R update?
That revolving loan. Just call it that loan.
Right, so that we don't lose track of it so that we can keep asking any news, any news, any update, any update.
Revolving loan and the, an update on the A&R report-
Thank you.
Of the non-completion of the capping of the site properly.
Was it the capping or was it the capping and the lining?
Well, one's lined and this one was capped.
Right, but the one that's capped that we're having the issue with wasn't lined.
Correct.
So it's, it's-
And that's, and there was other, the, the gentleman that came here and showed his little map and everything, there was other, there's, there is other test wells that were not listed on his map. And that was one of the things that I, that's why I emailed.
We know exactly where they are. We have the A&R map. We get, they're tested on a regular basis. We have all the data for that.
Okay, so I think what he was showing was the new ones that they were gonna be-
Right, they're doing specific test wells.
But I, but what I had requested was the, I wanted to know where, I know we have erosion, okay? I know that's what he stated, but I also wanted to see the last test results versus a few years back to, to see if there was any flags.
He just got his computer back.
Okay, I sent it to you.
To get the, I asked if there was any flags of a higher rating as far as to promote the testing. See, if, if, if our wells right now are not showing a higher rating of contamination, if they're all within, if they're all within the threshold, then why are we disturbing creating more wells?
Because they are, have nothing to do with that other site. They're in different proximity to the other site. They're not, they're not in the same proximity. They're not taking, they're not sampling the outflow from that.
I'll take the, I'll-
I, I sent you, I sent you all the information. I can resend it to you. We got all the, Tom gets all the tests.
You sent it to me, that's fine.
Yeah, all the testing, yeah, in fact, it was just a couple of weeks ago they were doing testing. They do it on a regular basis.
So, so the new test wells that they're digging have nothing to do with the current wells that are tested regularly?
No, nothing whatsoever.
But the other, there is wells adjacent to that area and I wanted to know if any of those were triggering also besides the site of erosion, physically seeing the erosion site. site, I wanted to make sure, if there's a red flag other than just a physical site of erosion.
Yeah.
To my, going by my memory, there was one of those wells that had a relatively high PFOA. Generally speaking, it was metals and it showed high.
It was slightly elevated, with the report that I saw, it was slightly elevated, but still within below standards.
Correct, yeah. I'm going by my memory, so...
No, I'm just, long we're on the same page here.
Yeah, yeah, because if you'd like, come on down, we'll take a walk, and we'll go show you.
I'm going to.
Yeah.
I'll go talk to them.
Take a walk.
I got an idea where the other one's at.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Would that be a vote for approval, sir?
You need a motion for approval?
It's up to you, but I mean, I just wanted to make sure that everybody's comfortable and that we can move forward. This is a big deal. It is approved.
Yeah, this is just an updated one.
This is an update, I thought.
But I just wanna make sure because I'm gonna put these guys to work, you know?
Yeah.
So I think Michael just wants us to openly state that, yes, to move forward, and that we are in full support of you working with, what's the agency that we're working with?
Excellent. Okay, thank you very much.
We need to get, make sure it's clean. I just wanted to verify that if we can save some of this money by the take...
Using the information from the existing wells.
Right, that and the state taking onus of what they owe us, then it's over here.
So I would say follow up with the gentleman from ANR to make sure he's following through on his promise to look at the paperwork, because I would almost suspect he's not.
We just gotta, busy conversations.
Yep.
I'm done.
Unless Harry wants to reach out to him, too.
No problem.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take care of it.
Uh, we already did, Joel. He already gave his update. We did that at the beginning, remember?
We had the fuel bed.
Oh, yeah, for the fuel bed.
The fuel bed.
Okay, we're gonna recommend sticking with John Ray. He was 23 cents over the rack price. Bov come in at 20 cents over the rack price, but, you know, that's a hard thing. Bov uses Opus or kind of a global, where John Ray uses Apex. I think to make it better in the future, we should make him bid on the same rack. When they get down to Port Albany in the wintertime, they both use Sprague. But, so anyhow, without going into a lot of stuff, their price was based on John Ray, a dollar ninety-four-three, plus the 23 cents was two seventeen-three. And that, they were both at the same day's rate. Bov started at 20.015 plus 20 cents, so they were 2.215. It wasn't a lot of difference. John Ray was a little cheaper.
How much is this for? How many gallons?
How many gallons? We bid about fifteen-five.
And is it just for the highway?
No, highway and wastewater.
Will you be using the same fuel for the bus?
What about transfer station?
They don't use it.
They don't use diesel?
They'll get it from the highway, and they reimburse.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the, so the 15.5 gal, 15.500, I'm guessing?
Fifty thousand five hundred.
Five hundred? Okay, and that's enough for everybody?
Well, it's actually the transfer station's deal.
Yeah, they fuel up and...
The fire engines fuel.
Actually, we kinda talked about that also. One of the salesmen mentioned they had, not them personally, but there's a computerized gauge you can put on the tanks that works off fobs. It's about eighteen hundred dollars. You know, everybody's, all your trucks have a fob, so it keeps track. It sends the information directly to your computer so you can print out a report saying Mike used 10 gallons, I use five, you use 20, whatever, to better track if it's something you want me to look into more. He was gonna send me the, it's a private outfit. Most of them I looked at were three, four thousand dollars to set up the card readers.
Yep.
But there was a maintenance fee every year.
That's what I was wondering, is this just a one-time fee?
This one, yeah. Supposedly you own it, you put it in.
Hey, Fred. Have a good night.
Get it.
I def, yeah, I would, I would love to see that because that would just be more efficient.
Yeah, we could keep better track of who's using how much fuel.
And make sure that if they're, if they have line items to reimburse the general fund or the highway fund for it, that they're actually paying the right amount.
I like it. So, do we wanna, well, request official quotes?
So what would you have to do? Would you have to, like, key fob every truck, or every, every item that uses the fuel? So the bucket loaders?
Pretty much. The transfer station would have one for theirs. The fire trucks would have a fob in their trucks, so you could, it's something right now, no, we don't need any votes or anything on it. It's just something that if you guys want...
But it would be equipment-specific, not just department-specific, like, not one key fob for the entire transfer station?
No.
If you want for each one of their equipments?
For eighteen hundred dollars, he explained to me, it comes with 20 fobs.
Okay.
And then it goes up the more you add on to it. But I think 20 fobs would do us. If so, now, I don't know.
How would it work for wastewater treatment?
Well, it wouldn't...
It wouldn't, it goes into it, it's for generators.
There's this generator, so...
That's what I'm wondering, like, it's not like they have equipment they would drive.
They get their own slips, you know, on it and pay the bills.
Okay, makes sense.
I recommend anyhow going with John Ray. We've had him for probably four years that I know of, and we've had pretty good luck with him.
Just a question on the, so are we billing the fire department every time they purchase some or take some fuel?
Yeah.
And is that coming in as a revenue or is it offsetting the expense?
It is a revenue.
It is coming, so there is a line item with the revenue from...
It would probably be under the highway budget, I'm guessing?
Okay.
And if it's not, we'll make sure it's there, 20/20.
I was just gonna say.
Those are the things we're working on, Jim. Here, do you wanna look at?
Ellen takes care of that.
Do you, do you have a contract with them that you need to sign? Are you gonna sign the contract? Like, what do you need from us? Just a...
I, no, basically not.
Bless you and our Father.
We're good.
To a hail mary.
Right.
Yeah, just wanted to kinda let you know the way we went.
Okay. Great.
I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we make a motion now?
Make a motion to accept John Ray for...
The fuel bed?
Fuel bed.
That's what I asked.
For the diesel?
Oh, I thought you were mentioning for the whole fob monitoring system.
Okay, I'll second that.
All right, a motion and a second to accept the fuel bed. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do we have any other business? I don't see anything on here other than executive session for personnel if necessary. So are we entering into executive session?
I'd like to enter into executive session for personnel.
Second it, I guess. I didn't know.
Thank you.
I thought we took care of our personnel. There's another one.
So, we have a motion and a second to enter into executive session for personnel. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Jim.